Ninth, I almost said May ninth. September ninth, two thousand and twenty four, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Middleton School Committee. This meeting is recorded. Would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I am not seeing any remarks from the public, so we'll move on to approving previous meeting minutes. There are two sets of minutes in the drive.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the July thirty first meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor to accept the minutes from July thirty first, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstains? Okay. And then the next one would be the minutes from August fourteenth.
I'll also make a motion to accept the minutes from the August fourteenth meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes from August fourteenth, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. All right, reports from other committees. I think we're gonna move this to after executive session.
Sure.
I think that Jackie Treminto from the PTO is gonna be here around six. Jackie, did you have anything from CPAC?
If you want to move it till after, that's okay. I can wait till.
In a few minutes now, if you want to do CPAC.
You can go for it if you want.
Yeah. So just for a CPAC update, we'll be having our first meeting of the year next, well, in two Wednesdays, I guess technically the eighteenth. It'll be at Masco Middle Library where it always is, and this year it will be at seven. We have changed the time. We'll be setting goals for the year. We are still seeking some new positions for the board. And members at large, always a treasurer. And just if people are seeking support and resources or would like to come and join us. So that's all for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving into executive session, so what is the?
So need a motion, Madam Chair, for made. Just reading why the reason on the executive session is on the agenda. We need it seconded and then a roll call in, and then a roll call out.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to just to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Dave?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Great.
I'm just gonna wait for a couple people to join us. Hi, thank you for coming.
Hi, Jackie.
How are you doing?
Good. So Jackie, I'm gonna hand it over to you for the school year PTO overview.
Please.
Have a lot of dates and stuff? Yes, yes, go ahead of this. So on behalf of the Middleton PTO, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this school community with an update on last year and our plans for this school year. Last year, we raised just under seventy-five thousand dollars, which was about eighteen thousand dollars more than the previous year. This was primarily accomplished through the fun run, which brought in forty-four thousand dollars, and our spring gala, which we raised fourteen thousand dollars. These additional funds covered bus costs for student field trips, which we plan to pay for again, assuming our fundraisers continue to be successful, and other new initiatives. Both of these fundraising events will take place again this year. The fun run will be held on October twenty ninth, and our spring event is scheduled for March twenty eighth. A note on the fun run, we are adjusting our service levels this year so that we will take a larger percentage of the donations while keeping the same program content for students and using their systems. It'll just be a little bit more legwork on us. And as this is our largest source of income, we are hoping all families continue to participate or make a donation to us through the treasure chest. We'd also like to thank our business sponsors who have not only donated financially but have been wonderful partners to us in providing food and in-kind donations to teachers and staff, which has helped us keep our costs down so that we can use our funds on programming and other initiatives. The majority of the funds raised will continue to be spent on curriculum enrichment, both field trips and in-school programs that align with classroom curriculum. Last year, we spent over forty-two thousand dollars on this, plus fourteen thousand dollars in transportation costs, so we're expecting that to be the same this year. We were excited to launch some new programs last year that we plan to continue and hopefully expand on, such as the Student Entrepreneur Bazaar and our Think Big Grants, in which we awarded six grants to teachers to fund various projects, including two grade-level projects at Fuller Meadow and updating the coding and technology books for How Manning. We'll also continue our community fundraising events, so hopefully you guys have seen these. We've done some with Maggie's, McDonald's. So we have two scheduled already for this year. Next week, Paradise Golf on September nineteenth, and then another with Maggie's Farm on November fourth. And our team is also hard at work planning the daytime events for the Pumpkin Festival, which will be held on October twenty sixth. Then finally, I'd like to extend an invitation to all parents that would like to be involved in the planning and execution of these and other events to join us at our meeting next Wednesday, September eighteenth at six-thirty here in the Fuller Meadow Library. We're always looking for new ideas, and it's a great way to meet other parents and have an impact on the student's educational experience and just partner with us. Update, but I'm happy to take questions. I know I went through that kind of quick.
I just want to say you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, I really, I really like the the town partnerships with like the businesses, like McDonald's and Paradise Golf and.
We've started to have businesses come to us, which is really nice, and say, you know, what can we do? What can we come up with? So we have a few members on the board that are working on a calendar to try and like space it out. So we're doing some for kids, some for adults, some mixed. We're trying to have events on like the half-day Fridays and different things so that parents and families can get involved. So it's been really good. The community's been really receptive to it, so.
The gala was a great time. It was a great event.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, we had fun.
Thank you for everyone who was able to make it. We're, we're trying to come up with themes, so if anybody has any suggestions.
Like Under the Sea or something?
Yeah, we're, we're thinking of actually at the open house nights kind of having a little voting box and just seeing if parents have any ideas and.
Yeah.
But we're, we're expecting it to be bigger. We did switch it to a Friday night. It'll still be at Spinelli's, but it was a good success for us last year. So it definitely offset the bus cost, which, you know, that was a big increase for us.
Yeah, it was nice to see everyone dressed up too. It was fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just want to thank Jackie too for the PTO, for the kindergarten welcome, parent welcome. We'll wrap the lot. That happened on Tuesday, Wednesday of last week. And it was just a nice event that the PTO puts on to invite all the new kindergarten families into the system. Jen was there. I was there. Michelle was there. And a large number of families were there as well. Yeah, it was a very good turnout. So thank you for, for putting that on. I think it's a great opening face for parents of the school district, for sure. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. And that's another example. The lot let us use their space. Bagel World supplied the bagels. McDonald's supplied some treats, so, and we did. We had parents that actually stayed like a full hour, and we're just talking to each other and talking to us. So we're expecting to see some of them kind of join the, and participate next week, too.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your support.
Okay, moving on. Summer readiness meeting.
Yep, and just put a little bit more finer point to on that K-orientation day. You know, as I said to the parents that day, another way to think about kindergarten through twelfth grade is like imagine your child on the bike with training wheels. That's kindergarten. And then imagine your child at the driver's seat of your car. And that's yet, when they're five years old, it's tough to think of it that way, but that's basically kindergarten through twelfth grade, more or less. And so it's just another way to kind of think about what it means to go through K to twelve system in any district. Summer readiness meeting, and that's an appropriate topic for today, for sure. Many of you may have seen the email alert that went out earlier today from myself and then from Fuller Meadow as well. So I'll start there and then go back to our summer readiness meeting. And sort of hash the bullet point under summer readiness meeting is the public safety partnership. We're just, we're so grateful for the relationship that we have with public safety. We have a very strong relationship across all three towns that we have nurtured over the years, for sure, and we're very grateful to our public safety partners. The emergency notification system that we use across the tri-town was activated today. We're still trying to determine, IT is doing some forensics on trying to identify how that was activated, whether it was an accidental internal activation or was it an outside hack job activation? So we are investigating that to see where that stands, and we'll have more information on that as IT does their work. But the system worked today exactly as it should work. So, you know, when you have those kinds of events, you never want them to happen. And we drill on this very consistently at the district level and at the school level as well. And the way it works is that when that system is activated, and I'm very grateful for the departments across all the towns because when we originally set this system up and had conversations with them, we said to Topsfield and Boxford, if something was to happen in Middleton, we want Topsfield and Boxford Public Safety to be aware of it. And we said in Topsfield, if something wants Middleton and Boxford, and Boxford, Topsfield and Middleton. And they all said yes to that, which is great because, you know, maybe a Topsfield police officer car is the closest car at that time. And boy, we would want them to be notified, right, motivated, notified, rather, right away, so they could be motivated to get here. And so when the emergency notification system was activated today, all three towns, police and fire received the notification. The rec, which is the regional nine-one-one center, received the notification. We worked with, over the years, police departments across all three towns, that the cruisers get the notification as well, so it's in the cruisers, it's at the rec, it's on cell phones and so on and so forth. So not something that, you know, we ever want to have go off when it's not a drill, for obvious reasons, because you don't want to activate all of that and all the protocols that, that are in place. But if and when something like that does happen, it becomes a tremendous learning experience for the district and for the staff that are involved in that. And so folks follow the protocols that they should follow. If they were outside, they managed to make sure that they were further outside and away from the building. If they were inside, they engaged in any type of activity that they would need to engage in. We were able to quickly identify that it wasn't an emergency. So within that alert system, we were able to notify staff that we had spoken with the principal, who had spoken with their staff here, and, you know, the teachers whose phone or system that it went off on did not press the button. It's not an easy sort of pocket dial kind of a thing, right? It is something that engages a couple of steps to happen. So again, we're still doing the forensics on how it went off. We immediately sent a text out to families with a quick notification. The system was activated. There is no emergency at the school. The principal will follow up. There was then a second email that went out about thirty minutes later, and then a third email that went out about thirty minutes later, just with sort of consecutively a little bit more information across the way. Fuller Meadow, as we normally will do in any of our schools, will pull their school safety team together and do what's called a hot wash. And a hot wash is to, you know, kind of get an understanding of what were the actions that were taken, what are some things that we learned from this endeavor? What are some things that we can do to improve our overall ability to respond in the case of an emergency? I think one thing I learned personally was, because it goes off at central office as well. And so, you know, a massive number of people are notified, and the purpose of that is to get a massive number of people to the school that could help in a situation like that. I realized that, you know, driving here, I'm trying to call on a phone, do crisis go, drive the truck, get here, you know what I mean? So I, I realized like, you know, for myself, grabbing someone from central office to sit in the passenger seat with me to work the phone and say, call here, call here, call here, call here, call here. So that becomes a takeaway that you really can't practice and drill for, right? Like in a drill, I wouldn't have normally driven over here. We would have done the drill. And so those are the things that I think are helpful for us as we look to fine-tune any protocols and procedures. But again, just a tremendous amount of gratitude to back up to the summer readiness meeting. It's the exact reason why we have such well-established relationships with all of our public safety partners. Every summer, we get together in this room. And we do about an hour and fifteen minutes in each town. Topsfield sends their crew over. We do an hour and fifteen minutes. Boxford sends their crew over. Do an hour and fifteen minutes. And the Middleton team comes in. Police, fire, public safety personnel, DPW personnel, food service personnel, the bus company personnel, school administrative staff, the nurses, principals, and we literally go through and talk about school year ahead. What do we need to be aware of? What are the road closures? What are we doing for winter storms? Is it still the same text group and so on and so forth? So that's, you know, this, the report I'm giving you today is sort of like all the things that we have sort of done since our last time we gathered in a July or early August meeting. And so we talk about all of that. We drill. We practice these things. And again, with the, with the event that happened today, we just appreciate everybody's quick response and quick understanding that we were able to sort of de-escalate very quickly and get communication out to folks. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Jen, but.
I would just piggyback on, you know, what a learning opportunity this was. So Scott had a learning, you know, based on being in his vehicle. I had a learning, you know, that you, you wouldn't have in a drill, right? Because a drill, you know, it's happening, it's orchestrated, you know, sometimes it's a little too perfect. This was not. So it was a tremendous learning opportunity. We did debrief after school. Did you say that?
No, I did not. You're right. Thank you for saying that.
I thought maybe I missed it. So we had a different kind of meeting scheduled after school, which I canceled, and I had all the staff come in because, as you can imagine, you know, a lot of feelings. And it was somewhere after two o'clock. I'm not sure exactly what.
About two-twenty, I think, yeah.
Right. So, you know, end of the day, figure out with all these little ones what's about to start happening with dismissal and all of that. So I think that the staff was able to do everything they needed to do, and then we quickly got a notification out to folks just to let them know everything, but then we had to dismiss. So that's a whole other level. So we pulled together a meeting with everybody in this room. Scott came and.
Adam, Detective.
From the police department and.
Sam, our resource officer.
Right. We kind of did a debrief over what took place. You could see that people had things they wanted to talk about, so they had that opportunity. And I think that was very helpful for everyone before they went home and, you know, y'all need to process it. And they now know we're gonna have a safety meeting. We're gonna debrief, figure it out, come back to them. And I think that was a very helpful thing to do. I also, just so you know, I sent the counselors around to every classroom to do a real quick check-in. You know, when you're dealing with young kids and not quite sure exactly what did they see. So the counselors, the mental health team, did a remarkable job of just checking in, kind of normalizing, you know, with the staff as well. And that was very much appreciated. And they debriefed with me after school to let me know just kind of what they heard, what they saw.
And it's not abnormal for the kids to see the police in the building. Like Sam was here the first day of school with crayons handing them out to the kindergarten kids in uniform, right? So it's, it's, the kids are familiar with our police department, right? It's one of our partners. That's a very important partner in the school district.
Yeah.
So it's not something that when they come in, it's like a, a thing, for sure.
So, you know, ongoing work based on what happened, but you, you couldn't have had a drill that was, that offered you that much. Not that I wanted this to happen, trust me. But I mean, it was an opportunity for learning and growth, so.
And once we have more information about how it happened, we'll certainly communicate.
Is everyone alerted? All the teachers, all the staff, got their phones?
Yep. Yes. Yeah. We don't advertise, obviously, a lot of our plans, you know, just because of obvious reasons, but from an alert perspective, yes.
Ever.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, and connected somewhere on here, or maybe it's not on here. Oh, it's in my, I think maybe in the opening day presentation. Like, you know, we're doing a lot of work now around incident command systems and, you know, if you had to close down roads and you had to, you know, do other things. So there's always this constant planning that is happening.
One thing.
With schools and public safety, for sure. So happy to take any questions on that before I jump into some of the other items.
I just, good work. And, you know, I, I hope that all the teachers and staff can breathe easy. You know, I, I'm in, I have some stressful situations in my job, and sometimes I just need to like step away and breathe and, you know, kind of take learning experience from it, too. But, you know, it isn't stressful. I feel for them.
Try to add a little levity to the situation at the end and get everybody to sort of breathe a little bit. I said to the teacher whose account was activated.
Yeah.
I said to her, I promise I won't include this in your retirement. Whenever you decide to retire, I won't include this in the poem that I typically write for staff members when they retire, so.
Yeah.
So there'll be more. I'm sure Jen will have the counselors do the, make the rounds tomorrow. And, you know, any parent emails or phone calls that we get, we'll, we'll talk to parents individually and try to relay any concerns that folks may have. Now, just to kind of quickly go through some of the other items. Association meetings. I just want to thank our association. We had an opportunity to get together this summer. Typically, I meet with the co-presidents in each town separately. And this year, I had said to them at the end of the year, I think it'd be great if all three towns got together at the same time. So we got the co-presidents together, Brian and I. We went out to a lunch one day in July or so and just had an opportunity to talk about the year ahead. We're entering into a negotiation year for our Unit A and Unit B and just how we can continue to work together in a positive and productive way as we navigate all of that work. And, you know, I think there was a lot of good conversation that was had at that lunch that day. And I meet regularly with our association co-presidents. Michelle joins every, sort of every other one. I think we put you on for the October meeting. So just, you know, grateful and to have the opportunity to connect with everybody and really talk about the year ahead and how we can all kind of navigate in a positive and a productive way and looking forward to that work as we move forward into the months ahead. So new teacher orientation. Thank Brian and his team. We do multiple days of new teacher orientation down, or new staff orientation, I should call it, down at Proctor School. That happens every summer. All the new staff from all three towns, the hirings that the principals do. We have everybody come in. They meet the team. School committee chairs are there, meet the PTO folks. Opportunity to kind of, you know, learn a little bit more about our district, what our goals are, what our vision and our mission is as an overall organization. So it was a good opportunity to connect with everybody. It's a nice way to sort of enter the district, similar to how we do with the kindergarten parents coming in. It's a nice way for our new staff to sort of be inducted into the district and learn about all the different departments and so on and so forth. And then a few days later, Brian does a similar endeavor for all of our Unit B folks and IAs that are on board. And Matt has a big part of that, and Steve has a big part of that, and all the different directors have a big part of that as well. Opening day for staff, I want to very, very quickly take you through. If you go into the drive, there's a document that reads twenty-four, twenty-five, opening day meeting. I'm gonna try in five minutes to do the hour that we typically do. So just a little bit of background on that. For newer members, we pull the entire staff together from all three towns up at the Topsfield Fair. We used to do it at Masco, but then Masco's schedule started to align with ours, and we couldn't use the auto term anymore. So we go up to Topsfield Fair, Coolidge Hall. We have all the staff from all three towns. It's just a great opportunity to kind of kick off the school year. And so I'll very quickly go through some of these slides. I always begin with gratitude, and so we spent a little bit of time on that. We always try to do a little quick fun activity. These are sort of interspersed throughout it. So this was the one has-to-go breakfast edition. So one of these things has to be eliminated from your breakfast, so I'm gonna put the school committee on the spot right now and ask you which one of these has to go of pancakes, bacon, French toast, and waffles. Who, how many of you are getting rid of bacon on that list? Joe's getting rid of the bacon.
Oh, my God.
Who's getting rid of? No judging, Michelle. Who's getting rid of pancakes? Pancakes. Who's getting rid of French toast? And who's getting rid of waffles? All right. Very good. So we, there's a reason for this, and I'll explain the reason that I do this in a minute with the staff. Every year, we have something where we have folks just trying to, and it is funny because you stand up, you're like, you kidding me? You don't like bacon? You know, and it just, it allows people to try to get together a little bit. The next slide I shared with the staff that we would land it with the regionalization study and gave them the link to the final report. Next slide is verkata. This kind of fits in with our overall safety endeavor. We had sort of six different versions of signing in at the schools, and we wanted to have a uniform way to do that. So verkata, you pop your license in, it does a quick check, a little background check, and then spits out the license and gives the staff the opportunity. This is for anyone who's coming in for a delivery or an interview or a worker that might be working on the plumbing or whatever the case may be. This has worked well so far. I think the one thing is people just have to get into the habit of remembering their license because oftentimes you might leave that in the car. We did a quick welcome to all three towns, leadership teams, association co-presidents. Years of service is always fun. So if you go to the slide that says five years of service, you'll definitely see some Middleton names on there. And we acknowledge the folks with five years of service. And then ten years of service, you'll see the names of the ten-year folks that are on there. Fifteen, you'll see some Middleton names, fifteen years of service in the tri-town schools. And then we get up to twenty years of service in the tri-town schools. And then it gets a little narrower with twenty-five years of service in the tri-town schools, and you can see the folks with that. Thirty, this was an animated thing, so it didn't show up in the PDF. Thirty was Kim Akonimos, who's a fifth-grade teacher over in Boxford. And we always do some type of a clock or something to acknowledge the thirty years of service. And then thirty-five years of service was Antoinette Valkort, who works in my office, as you know, and she wanted zero recognition. So I summar, summar, summarily, whatever that word is, picked up my phone, called her in front of hundreds of staff on speakerphone, and we all said congratulations, Antoinette. And she killed me when I got back to the office, but that's a story for another day. And then Kathy Craven, we always try to recognize longest standing members, and Kathy Craven is our thirty-seven, our big tall tree, so to speak, thirty-seven years of service. I believe, if I have this right, all in Topsfield, I think all in kindergarten, thirty-seven years in Topsfield, which is remarkable when you think about it. Then, if you remember the book Maurice Sendak, Chicken Soup with Rice, I did a Taylor Swift theme school gear and kind of came up with the lyric for every song. So like in September, you know, you belong to me, the kids belong to the teacher. And then I did one for every month, but I didn't give them all here. October, you need a cardigan. And March is a long month. You gotta shake it off. And April's a lavender haze. And it was quite intricate and involved, but we did a little Taylor Swift theme, and people seemed to resonate with folks.
I wouldn't take you for a Swifty.
I will tell you what. What I didn't tell you was what got me there was one of my nieces and I communicate via text in Taylor Swift lyrics. So that got me thinking like, huh, I bet you I can use those lyrics and come up with something for every part of the school year. And so it was, yeah, not a huge Swifty. No, I don't, I'm not in the fan club. And then the educational vision and tri-town school union, our vision and mission has aged very well. And the reason I say that to you is that slide that has Desi's vision on there. Russell Johnson is the new commissioner at Desi. He's acting there in the search for a new commissioner. But if you look at the three circles there, learning experiences that are relevant real world and interactive, students are known and valued, and individualized supports to enable students to excel at grade level. It really matches our pillars of innovative teachings, our social emotional learning pillar, and our inclusionary practices that we have. And so those have aged very well. You've heard me say this before, a child born today enters the workforce in forty-six, forty-seven, which is wild to think about. Talked a little bit about the convening that we did this summer with CEOs and higher ed and Desi. Couple pictures of what the classrooms of the future could potentially look like as we get further down the road. McKinsey Global Institute, just talking about AI and VR, and you've heard me talk about that. We had the goggles on last year here in, in the room here. The next couple of slides with little Sesame Street theme brought to you by the letters A and I, and just some background on AI and generative AI. If you've never used Suno, like fabulous little party endeavor, if you have people over, you give it a type of genre of music. So this one, you can see here, it was a jazz version of a school administration meeting, like super hip, right? A jazz version, and it immediately, within like thirty seconds, has a jazz song with lyrics in a chorus that's all about school administration. So Dave, if you were, you're a business, if you were to say like, I want a country song about, you know, real estate and mortgage rates and all those things, they would instantly produce for you a country song about.
I'm gonna look this up.
It's fascinating. Fascinating. Yeah.
That's awesome.
And then prompt engineering, that's really what AI is. This will be a major in colleges down the road. Prompt engineering is, AI is only as good as the prompt you put into it. And prompt engineering is something that will be a part of our kids' future. Google has a product called Say What You See, and it gives you like a picture, and then the kids have to try to identify it, like using prompt engineering. It's a red background with blue flowers in front and a blue bike. And they see how close they are to, you know, getting the picture based upon the words that they say. BR, a little bit on that. So that, going back to the food metaphor that I was making earlier, when we do those things where it's like, which one has to go? I was sharing with the staff this idea of tethering, right? And it's so important that as students in a school and that adults in our organization, that we are tethered to each other. And I was giving the examples of like a mountain climber tethers to the mountain, right? They, they use the carabiner and they tether to the mountain to climb the mountain, unless you're a free solo person, but most people tether to a mountain. A baby, we don't put the baby in the car seat and then just put the car seat in the backseat. We tether it with a seatbelt, right? We make sure that the baby is, is tethered to the vehicle. And the shark tank, like they don't just, you know, drop the tank in and good luck with the fish or the sharks. They tether it to the boat so they can sort of pull you back up. And this idea of making sure that our kids are tethered, you've heard us talk about this before in terms of the relationship mapping and making sure all of our kids are known by our staff and connected, and the adults are the same thing. And it's much like that carabiner sound. You can hear when you make those connections with people. And as you can see on that slide, the Vince Lombardi quote, people who work together will win, whether it be complex football or the problems of modern society. And then together, it got me thinking, I said to the staff, if you kind of rearrange the words, together is go tether, right? So how do you tether with the kids in your class? And how do we tether as a group? And so then I did a quick activity about, you know, how many of you have a cellphone? And of course, everyone's. And so then I did a quick activity about, you know, how many of you have a cell phone? And of course, everyone stood up. How many of you have a corded phone at home? All the 20-year-olds looked at me like I was insane, like what's a corded phone at home? But it was an opportunity to see who still has these things. And again, it allows for staff to make connections with people that they might not know. Couple of books that I have been reading this summer, Think Again, Adam Grant, In Range, and How to Know a Person, and The Anxious Generation. Anxious Generation is a fascinating book, just talking.
So good.
It's unbelievable, Natasha. I'm like a third of the way through it.
I'm like near the end.
Mind-boggling.
I'm going to read it again.
Yes, it's fascinating. So I can't wait to get through the whole thing. If you, if you look at some of his things on like CBS News that he's done as well, it's, his interviews, like, it's really amazing. And like, the data is, I feel irrefutable.
I'm, I have the audible in my car and I make my kids listen to some of it. The discussion about cell phones and what is the right age and all that stuff. I'm like, I'm not crazy. This person did all this research and it's not.
In every country, like the, the anxiety and depression in every country from like 10 to 15.
Nuts.
It's, it's so dense, the, the research that he gets into. It's a fascinating book, fascinating book. A couple of quotes that were jumping out at me, blowing out someone else's candle doesn't make yours shine any brighter. And this idea of you changed and we're supposed to, the caterpillar and the butterfly. The fixed mindset versus the growth mindset leaves, so the trees are about to show us how beautiful it is to let things go and why you should be kind to people, someone's problem and what you might know about it. And then some final thoughts. I thought this is interesting. You're the average of the five people you spend the most time with? Are those, are you around people who support, inspire, and encourage you? If not, make changes. If you struggle to find these people, listen to podcasts, read books, and attend workshops to find that. And then the number 168, just the number of hours in a week. Think about all you do, working, eating, sleeping, exercising, so on and so forth. List seven or eight priorities such as work, exercise, spiritual life, and using 168, the number of hours in a week. Determine how much time you'd like to spend in each activity. You can kind of then go back and chart it in your calendar to see if what you're spending your time on matches what you want to spend your time on. And then just sort of cheers to new school year and off and running. And so I can hopefully say that it was a much more entertaining and involved than that, but that is the five-minute version of the opening day presentation, just to get everybody launched. And then students, I will say, and Jenna and Jeff will talk about this as well, just really smooth opening. We're very grateful for all the work that everybody did across the three towns. The first two days back, right before Labor Day, it was like we had been back for a while. We always make sure we get out to all the schools those first couple of days and into the following weekend. It was like we never left for sure. So kudos to all of our staff and leadership who are involved in all of that. And I was trying to be quick because I know we're a little bit behind, but happy to take any questions on any of that.
Yeah, it's a good presentation, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Any questions from anyone else? No? Alright, moving on to Mr. Greenberg.
Good evening, everyone. I will try to be even more brief. Anyways, to help catch up. So we've started school year. As you know, buses underway. We do have seven drivers assigned. We've had one issue with a driver being out, which that along with a couple of other things prompted us to bring senior management in to talk about what our expectations are and keep pushing them to move forward. For the start of school, I think the start of school went well, but I will defer to the principals, if, you know, with regard to the buses. From what we saw on the first day of school and then the week after that with kindergarten, I thought was pretty good. Am I right, wrong? Yeah?
Thumbs up.
Thanks. How about, how about you, ma'am?
Honestly, it's a bit of a blur, so probably.
So I'll take that as a yes.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple of things, but I think that they've been resolved.
Food service, again, underway. We are going to be putting a breakfast program in place.
Okay.
That will start September 23rd. It will be a phased approach. So we'll start with the senior grades of both schools, and the next day we'll add a grade, and the day after that it will be all the grades. Of course, if somebody comes in and wants breakfast, they'll have breakfast. So we're moving forward with that. We will work out any of the particulars for each school. As we get closer, we will communicate that to families as well in the next couple of days. This is free of charge and it's important for everyone to understand that it is, just like lunch, there's a type A lunch, but we have to put certain things on a tray for it to be reimbursable. Breakfast will be the same way. Yet it will be a kind of breakfast that'll be more like packaged foods. There will be a fruit, things like that. I know somebody will want something different, but time is definitely a struggle. There's just not enough time in the day. When we look at when kids are coming in, how much time we have, and everything that we cram into a school day. So I will stop and answer any questions. Yes, ma'am.
When you say packaged, are you talking like a Lunchable?
No, I'm talking more like, like a muffin.
Okay.
A breakfast bar.
Oh.
There will also be a fruit. There'll also be a juice and or milk. But there has to be four items, I believe, with it. You know, in total, on a tray for it to be reimbursable. In terms of location, we've talked about having it in each of the calves when the kids come in 15 minutes prior to the start of their first class. But there'll be things that we have to hire now.
So, so what happens if they take the bus and the bus gets there late?
Then as soon as they walk in, if they want breakfast, they're entitled to breakfast.
They grab and go down to the classroom, probably. Like a snack.
Okay.
Like, so we would say to the kids, like, alright, you run late, head down to class, or if anyone wants breakfast, you know, head into the calf and do a grab and go.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The liaison that we voted to hire.
Yes.
Has that person?
Yes.
Okay.
That's underway.
Okay.
It'll be a name familiar to the group.
Yeah, I ran into her the other day.
Yes. Cherie supplied over the summertime.
Oh, really? That's so funny because I mentioned, mentioned the joking meeting with Carol.
Yeah, you did, exactly. And Cherie supplied and she was one of the only applicants who applied. So it worked out great.
Good for her.
So she's former school commit, what's great about that is she's helped that then in terms of helping move and leading and all that jazz and knows the district and knows us. And it's kind of like plug and play, which is great. So we'll have her come to the TCU meeting. We've had one meeting already. She'll do a lot of state reporting, but looking to, you know, try to do more of our signature meals that we do. Steve loves a Thanksgiving meal. And can we start to try to do more of those things? So she'll come to the TCU meeting on October 3rd.
Okay. She just couldn't stay away.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions?
It's Tuesday the 7th.
Two, oh, next week, okay.
I don't.
Seeing none. Moving into financial report, really nothing to report for FY '25 at this time. You know, we're just starting out. Things are quiet, things are moving along. And if anything does come up, of course, we will communicate it through the school committee as quickly as possible. We will be issuing the financial reports like we usually do every month. And we'll have that summary information as well as detail going forward. For FY '24, for the committee, just so that you know, as soon as I find my cursor, the turn back to the town for FY '24 was $4,360.91 on a $14,724,000 budget. So I will stop talking and answer any questions.
Just connected to finance, one thing that we are working on, and it's been on our radar, and we have slowly been working on it across the three towns, and our timeline, I'll say, is being advanced. MLTS stands for multi-line telephone system. And there are some rules and regulations out there now that have to do with what's called the dispatchable location. And what a dispatchable location means is if I was to call 911 from, on a landline from Fuller, you don't want it just to come up as Fuller Meadow. You want it to come up as Room Eight, Fuller Meadow, right? So it's really pinpointed down to the classroom. And so we have been slowly heading in this direction, Topsfield. We're working on that right now. We're working to use the current phone system and put this, it's a software piece more than anything else. It's not a hardware piece. And so we're putting this, these dispatchable locations into play in Topsfield. We received a communication from the state saying, hey, you need to move, you know, quicker in Middleton and Boxford. You know, we were going to kind of do a phased approach, like let's do Topsfield, and then we'll do Middleton, and then we'll do Boxford. They're going to want us to move quicker than that. And so we're getting quotes for all three towns, or the other two towns, for Boxford, Middleton now. I think the Topsfield quote was like in the $15,000 range, but that will be something that could be a potential unbudgeted expense that we were not counting on this year. That, we'll get that back to number, back to you to say, Steve will monitor the budget. It's an important safety piece, obviously, to have the exact dispatchable location. And obviously, we want to, we want to make sure we're going to be in compliance with that. So we will, when we get that quote, I think Steve and Steve are both working on that. We'll bring that back to the committee, but just to kind of, you know, sort of pinpoint that or highlight it for the committee that that'll be an item that we weren't anticipating, but should be a relatively small dollar amount when you consider the return on the investment as it relates to that endeavor. So we want to come on that, but it's called MLTS. Multi-line telephone system, so. That's that.
Moving on to report from the principals.
So I don't know if Dr. Morrison is aware or not, but if you can quote 12 Taylor's 12 songs, then you are indeed a Swifty.
Okay, hold on.
I'm tired.
Have to Google Taylor Swift song and go to full list.
But now you can, therefore.
You are. Tell her, therefore you are.
I love it, though. I love it.
The downside of doing your.
Guess what? We're going to have you sing at the next leadership meeting.
So and I hate to jinx it, so I'll knock on wood and ask you to do the same. The, the opening of school this year was, was probably the smoothest that I've experienced in my eight years here at Howe Manning. It was from the kids to the teachers, everything has gone off without a hitch, other than the one hiccup with the bus last week. But we adjusted and we rolled with it and everything turned out just fine. Some, our staffing remains stable. I am not in mid-season form yet. I did not bring my enrollment numbers with me, but last, or a couple of weeks ago, August 21st, we did a new student orientation, which was well-attended. I think we had all but one family show up where they come in and get to see. We give them a tour of the school. They get to see where their classroom is. Some of them actually got to meet their teacher. The teacher happened to be in working that day, and they got to meet their teacher as well. So I think that's appreciated by people moving into the town. Upcoming, this Wednesday, our fifth and sixth graders will be attending the 9/11 ceremony put on by the fire department out up by the flagpole beyond the baseball field. One of our sixth graders, Madison Barrigan, will be reading a poem as part of that that presentation. We also have upcoming, one is, we have our first early release this Friday that everybody should be aware of. There'll be notifications going home from both schools before that. For Howe Manning, September 24th and 25th is open house nights. Those notes have been, those times, dates and times have been in the newsletter, Home to Parents, Grade Three and Five on the 24th, and Grades Four and Six will be on the 25th. And then at the end of the month, September 30th and October 1st, our sixth graders will go on our annual trip to Project Adventure in Beverly, which I happen to think is a great time. I think the kids love it as well. There are a lot of cooperative games at the beginning, and then the second day, they do a lot of climbing up in the trees, which is always enjoyable to, to see. It's open for the teachers that go to participate. I don't think we've had anybody yet that has taken them up on that. But we will see. And then last, just a little Howie update, if you don't follow his page. Last Friday, Howie and I started our day up in Jaffrey, New Hampshire, at a high school up there in a, for a crisis response. This was not connected to our work with Nemlec. This was a call that came out from a breeder that's in her neck of the woods. So Howie and I spent about an hour at the high school, going classroom to classroom. He was one of, I think there were eight dogs there that morning. I think six of them were, were Boomfield Labs. So he did good work that day and then came back and crashed pretty much the rest of the day.
And there he sits.
Yeah, like that. He spent most of his day that way.
I love when they come over in the morning and it's like arrival and he's literally laying in the lobby.
Yeah.
And the kids are just petting and marking him. And he's just, doesn't even move.
No.
Happy as a clam.
Yep. Happy to be there. And that's about it.
I did have a question on this specialist rotation.
Yep.
For this year, because I know that there's been, I've seen some stuff come home with my child, and I know it's different from previous years. And we had meetings where there were conversations about classes being changed. So can, can you just give like a rundown of what the specialists are for this year?
Sure. So we, the override, not going through, really threw a wrinkle into our full plans. So we're actually operating with pretty much five specialist teachers. There was a whole conversation that you've had with Scott around
Reclassifying.
Covering that sixth classroom in sixth grade. So currently, what we have is art, music, phys ed, library. And then the fifth one is auto innovation. It's so innovation and artivation have been collapsed kind of into one. Most of it is the projects that were part of innovation are now part of that class. We're still kind of working on a name for, for the whole thing. So it's a little bit new wrinkle on the, the innovation program. And then the sixth one that we are doing for sixth grade, because there are six sections of that, is a research class. And the thinking around that being in this information age, there's, you can find information everywhere. What's a good source? What's a primary source? What's a reliable source for that? Where do you find those things as opposed to just Googling in the, the word that you're looking for and a million things come up. You have no idea the veracity of it. And then transitioning from that in working with, in conjunction with the sixth grade teachers on projects that they are doing in class to allow them to do their research during that time as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments? People want to move on?
Okay, thank you.
Just on the Howie piece, this is just exciting. I've asked Jeff to attend a meeting. We have a staff member in one of our other towns who wants to try to replicate the endeavor that we have here at Fuller Meadow, which I think would be very cool if we were able to do that. So Jeff will be joining myself, the principal there, and the staff member about potentially trying to replicate the Howie model at another one of our schools. So it'll be fun to see if that works.
And one more note on him. Me, Howie, and Julie Clipfel will be presenting
Oh, right.
at Masque in October down at Gillette Stadium. We got approved to do a, kind of basically how we came about the program, how we use them in the school, and then how people can potentially start their own program as well. So that'll be in October.
Great.
Nice. In the luxury suites at Gillette Stadium.
Nice. Okay.
I feel like Jeff, that I'm afraid to jinx it, but we had an outstanding opening. Things went really smoothly. It's so nice, the way we do things, that we bring in the first and second graders for a couple of days. You know, the big men on campus, they know what's going on, but they get a chance to come in and kind of get themselves settled. We do the screening, the meet and greets and all that with kindergarten, and then we can kind of stagger it after the long weekend bringing in all the little folks. Staff is amazing. You know, I asked for the day kindergarten starts for like all hands on deck. And everybody, you know, they're in the hallway. I have extra people out by the buses. I have the drop-off. You know, they've got their teddy bears. We don't want any child having a transition that's kind of a traumatic experience. So the more adults we have present, the better that goes. It went famously. So I, I just can't thank the staff enough. I think they really do focus on what's best for kids. And they showed up and I think our, Scott happened to be there because I think he was watching some of the traffic flow. And it was just, it was, it was a beautiful start. And when I go home and my husband's first question is always like, how'd it go? Like, it was awesome. He's like, whoa. Because usually there's some little sidebar stories and, you know, it was, it was wonderful to have an experience like that. Staffing, we have really awesome new hires. I was really excited for all the folks we were able to hire over the summer. We still have a couple of openings. A little surprised at one of them. I thought people would be interested in being a .6 building substitute. So put it out there. It's a three-day-a-week position, and you're basically on staff as a substitute. So typically, we use them to cover maybe an IAP meeting. Sometimes it's just that morning, you know, they report for duty regardless of whether they know an assignment, but often, you know, we're shorthanded somewhere and they're sort of just the jack-of-all-trades. We use them that way. So we need to fill that spot. If people know folks that they think would be interested in a job like that, it would be great. Because right now, you know, we're just staffing things with day-to-day substitutes. And we had a tricky situation the other day and we had to move a lot of people around. So we would love to get that filled. We have a special ed .7 teacher slash evaluator to be filled. I don't want to jinx myself, but we might be moving in a good direction there. So I'm going to just keep it quiet until we see how that lands. And we still need one more TA for our special ed specialized program. So another case if anybody happens to know anybody. Current enrollment, I am pretty happy to report. Current enrollment, I, I'm pretty happy to report that kindergarten, we had no move-ins. So, remember how we cut that section. We cut it five sections. We have 15 in each class, so I'm very pleased to say that, you know, it didn't, scales didn't tip, so that's good news. We have six sections of first grade. We have 15 in all those sections except for one, so the class sizes are still small based on, you know, last year. And then, in second grade, we have six sections, and we have 18 in three of the classes and 17 in two of them. We do have a recent move into kindergarten, so one of those classes is probably going to go up later this week. And the other thing is Angelicas. I'm pretty sure you're all aware of where we're at with that, but it's working beautifully. It's really just replicating the golf course, you know, so for new parents or kindergarten parents, they had to learn anyway, so it wasn't that biggie. And for those folks that had been here for first and second grade, and they were used to the golf course, they're just driving a little further up the street, so we're grateful for that for now. So, that's working well.
And Justin and I can stay and continue communication. We need a longer-term solution, obviously. You know, we're very grateful to have Angelicas, but we need to think about the next 30 years of the Fuller Meadow driveway and parking lot, so it's on the town's radar. I know Justin's working with Select Board and Conversation, so we'll see how that unfolds over the course of the year, but know that that's something that'll be kind of a constant dialogue that we'll have for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to the 24-25 handbook.
So, you guys worked on that. Who was the rep? Jackie? So, we always do that, like policy. We do a subcommittee just to kind of make it easy, so we don't have to navigate the full thing at the committee meeting. So, Jackie worked with Jeff and Jen on handbook, and what we seek every year is just a motion to approve the handbook, because that approves all of the, the policies that are, we've been updating along the way, and so on and so forth. So, the copy of the handbooks in the drive, not, I don't think any change is very similar to where we were last year other than a couple of names.
No, they were like very minor tweaks and things, so nothing substantial.
Okay. So, you're looking for a motion to approve the handbook?
As presented, yeah.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the 24-25 handbook, say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business.
So, no gifts and grants. That's a standing item. M S B A update. As the committee may recall from meetings last year, we put forward a statement of interest. The committee had approved this. The Select Board had approved it. We have a small section of the Fuller Meadow roof that did not meet the M S B A requirements 15 years ago, whenever we last did the Fuller Meadow roof. It meets it now, and so, there's a, just a copy of an email that I put in the drive. It just says, "M S B A update," if you want to read through the email, but basically, as a, a summary, there were 71 applicants for the $150 million pot of money, of funding that's available to do accelerated repair program jobs. We're a very small project. This would be also places out of doing entire roofs and windows and doors and so on and so forth. So, we won't know where we land. I think we are well-positioned in Middleton. What, what M S B A likes to see is that you are shovel-ready, so to speak, and that you have some funding already earmarked for this endeavor. And so, at last year's town meeting, the town allocated about $300,000 for design and development of the project, and so, I think M S B A likes to see that. It's not like they approve us, and then we go, "All right, you have $5, and you have $5." Let's see if we can put the money together. We have the funding there to do the design and development, so that's huge. As you can see in the highlight there, as part of the meeting, M S B A came out. Michelle and Natasha and I got a view of the roof, which was great. We were able to climb onto the roof and kind of get a view of things. Mr. Greenberg was there.
Looks good.
Leading the charge. He was really the linchpin on the whole thing, key to the whole roof.
I wasn't doing the spot and running that roof.
It looked like Spider-Man, actually.
Kind of was, yeah.
I took a picture, just so you know.
And by Spider-Man, you mean he didn't travel between all the different roofs, exactly. So, it was a good opportunity to see where it was. M S B A was updated. They took pictures. They asked us questions. They have a meeting, if you remember. Wasn't it like October 30th or something? It's late October, I think, where they will decide, 71 applications, $150 million, how does it all kind of come together? Boxford also put in one similar. We have a small section roof, so that same day, we went over to Boxford, did the same exact thing. So, we hope that we are funded. It would be great to get that done. We would, I think, be out of the roof business for a while if we were able to do that in Middleton. Howe Manning is still 13 years old. That's, you know, hopefully a 25, 30-year roof, and if we're able to get the roof done here, that small section, we will be capital-wise in a really good spot in terms of the roofs of our schools, so more to come on that for sure.
So, if they're not meeting till October 30th, so we would find out, in theory, in the month of November, if we have an agreement with M S B A?
If they, if we've been invited into the program, yeah.
Okay.
And then, we would have to, Steve, take it from here for me, engage in, you know this better than I do, design and development and...
Yeah, so what'll happen is there'll be specific votes that have to happen, so if they invite us into the program, they'll be looking for probably specific votes from the school committee, specific votes from the Select Board, saying that they want to partner with the M S B A. Then, at that point, they'll probably move into assigning us an O P M and an architect, architect slash engineer for the roof design and work, which money has been set aside for that via town meeting, thank you, and then the work will begin. And then, we'll have a kickoff meeting with the architect and the O P M, you know, at some point over the next few months, let's say.
And plans to be designed and developed with the goal being, we would know a price to bring to a town meeting in the spring?
Right, so when we sit down with them, that, of course, that would be one of the first things I think we would say, is that we need to make sure we have a hard quote in hand and a hard number in hand when we go to the May town meeting.
And the beauty...
There's a, there's a meeting, there's, the town is planning on a meeting December 12.
Yeah, there's a special town meeting, I think, in December.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're saying, what I've been told, it's for the roof, but I'm like, we don't even have a partnership yet with...
We don't. I think Justin's earmarking it. He wants to, he, he had done that, and that was the email he had communicated to M S B A, like, "Look at, we've got some money earmarked, and we've got a town meeting on the books if we need it." I think he's just really trying to position us well.
Yeah.
So, they would look at us and go like, "Okay, Middleton is ready."
Ready to go, yeah.
Like, "They are ready." It's not like, "There's no date on the calendar. They have no money." You know what I mean? It's, I think he's just really trying to position us well so we can move on it. And then, again, the, the great thing about partnering with the M S B A, it could be upwards of 40 cents on the dollar, right?
Yeah, somewhere around there, just, you know, be careful what we say.
38, 37, 35, but, you know, it's, it's a great partnership, for sure. So, more to come on that. School Brains, this will be a T T U item. That's our student information system. We are, I think we have exhausted the value of it. It's not working as great as, you know, it should be working. We have to do a ton of state reporting. It's very clunky. Every time we get into state reporting season, it's always like, it just, it should just mesh and work well, and it does not mesh our work well. Class lists, you probably saw that fun endeavor this summer when, you know, we were going to do class lists at 3:00 on August 15th, and all of a sudden, School Brains had an app, and people could find the app and find out who was, who's class their child was in before the school put it out, and of course, that led to a lot of emails and phone calls, and School Brains telling us, "The app shut off. No one can get the app." Wrong. A lot of people got the app. So, it's just, it's not working as it should be working. It's, we need it to work well. We're going to start to look at some other things. I've asked Julie to really start to look at Power School, because that's what we use up at Masco, and it would just align much easier. You know, at the end of our sixth grade, in the spreadsheet, put it into the Masco system. It would work better. So, we're exploring this. Julie's going to come and talk about all of the travails that she has experienced with School Brains at the T T U meeting, because that would be like a, like the food service and buses. That's going to be a dry town kind of event that we would have to do, but more to come on that for sure, but...
What are the other communities use? What does Topsfield and Boxford use?
School Brains.
School Brains.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. It's funny. I was cleaning out my office, and I found a stack of old papers in like a folder or whatever, and it was, I feel like it was 2018, I think, on the back of my daughter's first grade folder or whatever, it had the class list that, that they sent home. When did that change? Like, is there a reason why they don't, you used to get it in the mail, and these are all the kids in your kids' class?
Yeah, there were some privacy things along the way.
Okay.
That came to our attention, and what we've realized is, as soon as the notifications go out.
It goes on Facebook.
Between social media and texting and Facebook.
Yeah.
All the class lists are figured out, but it's not from us.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know what I mean? It's from, it's people.
So, it's a liability thing?
It's people. Yeah, I have to go back and look.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know we did make that transition, and my memory bank is saying it had something to do with the school district.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Putting out information on kids for other kids that might not be your child. Do you know what I mean? Like.
Got it.
We're letting you know where Michelle's kids are, and Michelle might not want that known, right?
Right, okay, I got you.
But if the parents decide to do it, and it happens within 30 seconds, but at least it's happening with parent knowledge as opposed to.
Sure.
Us necessarily doing that.
Got it, okay.
And again, I could go back and look at my notes too, but that's what's coming back in my brain, is it had something to do with that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Signatory page. Jackie, did you get a chance to sign that?
Yes.
And Joe, you got a chance to sign?
Yes.
Thank you both for doing that. And then, Jeff, if you want to talk, we have a printer that's old and surplus.
We have a 3D printer, MakerBot replicator. It's a 10-year-old 3D printer that the company has actually discontinued because the technology is so old. Scott asked about the condition. Physically, it looks like it's in good condition. However, it's, it's very slow compared to newer technology. It also has a propensity to jam in the, I don't even know all the particulars of it, but like the plastic thread comes out of it, that gets jammed. It has to be taken apart and pulled out and everything else. It's a, it's quite difficult to clean, but I think ultimately, it's, it's old. We have replaced it. We have a newer that we bought last year, so now it is taking up space, so we would like to surplus that.
So, the motion would be just to declare the 3D printer a surplus?
Yeah, the 2015, what's the brand name again?
MakerBot replicator.
So, that.